Well seen, wits three o'clock and it doesn't look like anybody from the public is going to join us here. We'll go ahead and get this special work session started. Of course, you guys know all three commissioners, Lindsey Mitchell, Public Information Officer, and Robert Valley County Minister. Why don't you go ahead and introduce yourselves and everybody?
I'm James McCain, small farmer out here. Roger Zesa?
Nico Wolf, I'm a cropper, I'm a builder and a small farmer also.
David Justice, I'm representing the Landborne Foundation, but I'm also involved with these guys.
What foundation?
Landborne, up there in North Fork Valley.
What is that?
Do you know where the trading post is up there just north of Peonia? Daddy and Greg Cranston?
And Noel Wickman, from Hodgskis, pretty much a small farmer, small business.
Welcome. I do have a hard stop at 3:50, I've got another meeting over at the Rubino Room following this. These gentlemen are welcome to stay as long as they are able. So please, go ahead.
So, well, we'd like to introduce ourselves formally now. We have organized into an official and legal nonprofit association called Alliance for Land Liberty. And we are here as representative of the community. And we're establishing a long-term representation of that, of the people here. And we're a grassroots effort, we're responsible for filling the auditorium with 600 people on February 28th. We currently have an email list of over 500 people, we moderate Facebook group of over 700 people. We're conducting an extensive survey, identifying key land use issues in Delta County from the people. We've received over 120 contributions to that so far. And it's giving us quite a good bit of data of what people are looking for, what the problems that people see. A big problem that we do see, we hear a lot of is from the community, is one of community confusion and a feeling of disenfranchisement. It's implied encroachment of government and the legal jargon that's in this code. People are worried about how it's complicating home businesses and small businesses and private land use. And considering the immediate state of the economy, both in the county level, the state level, and the world, we're really hoping that the county government here can sympathize with, empathize with the community and who are very concerned about property rights and livelihoods from and on the land. And we are here because we want to support you and what you're doing. And we want to be sure, we want to be safe in knowing that you also are supporting what the people want and need to do. I know I'm not getting into specifics right now, but it's, it is, there is this very overarching theme of everything that we need to deal with. You're currently going through the code again, 2021 code, which is this one, line by line. And the question is, is the process solving actual problems that the LUC needs to be solving? There's one question that we hear a lot, is what problem are we trying to solve here? So that is one thing we would like to understand too, is what are the specific problems that need to be solved that we can work with you to solve that? And so there's a problem, and we seek a solution by working in a sphere of honesty and transparency and mutual benefit. And our goal is to help channel the energy of the people towards a productive and reasonable outcome that works both for the people and the county government. So we can help identify and understand genuine problems that need tangible mitigation. And we can help facilitate a superior outcome in which people are heard and allowed by right to live responsibly on their own land. And that's what so many in our community desire. So we're here to help shape a mutually beneficial plan for both the citizens and the county. Does anyone have more to add to that part?
Not so far.
Not so far. So, can, you said when the 2021 first went back for amendment, that there were six specific issues that were needed fixing? Is that correct, or six?
That was, that was our, you know, that was our intention when we first started this process.
Can you please name the six?
You know, it depends on, depends on how you label them. Number one, we needed the solar code. We had nothing in there to help us through solar. We needed something, so somebody from the outside wants to come to a solar facility here, they have-
Industrial solar.
Industrial, yeah, or, you know, large-scale commercial, that they, that they know, you know, what's to be expected when they come into Delta County. Number two, you know, we needed to get our wireless into the code itself. It was written as an addendum, and it wasn't necessarily attached, so that was, that was number two. Number three, we needed to try to come up with a method for smaller lot sizes. The A5 just wasn't working, and we needed to find some way to develop smaller lot sizes, smaller zones, so we weren't having to go through the variance process 50 times a year. And so, you know, that, that was, that was a big portion there.
Surveyors.
Surveyors, yes. We had, we had many meetings with surveyors, there was a lot of problems with the way the code was written. It wasn't meeting the surveyor language, so we, we addressed, we worked on addressing that so we could have the language address what they were, what they were talking about, so.
Well, and then just kind of just clear up some of the language as far as you say, you know, legally, try to make it easier for people to understand, make it so that this land use code could be easily understood. Hopefully make the process faster, get them an answer quicker, more surety, rather than a lot of questions.
And we were trying to consolidate the subdivision regulations into one section of code instead of spread out over three or four sections of the code, so.
And what, one of the difficulties is in the 2021, there's references in one chapter to the next chapter. So trying to clean up those references so they're, one, consolidated, two, easier to follow, and three, more efficient for the applicants and for the other county. If that, if you understand what I'm trying to say there.
Yeah, I sure do.
One specific suggestion that I would love to see in this, since you're always asking for specifics. And one thing I, I am sure with, if I'm on one page, I've got to flip back to find out what chapter I'm in, what section I'm in. If each, top of each page could say that, say, "Chapter this, section this, that," I mean, I think that'd be pretty easy to put into a processor. And then we know exactly where we are all the time. I'd just be helpful in delivering specific issues.
You know, I've had that thought many times myself, is, I mean, I've got a whole nother notebook in there of iterations, so yeah, I would, I've actually labeled the chapters just to help speed up the process, but yeah.
So how far, this is the November 5th, 2021, is that right, Dave? Well, this is the original one.
January?
January, yeah, January 5th, 2021. How far changed has it already become?
Nothing's, nothing's changed yet, we're merely in the draft. We, and we haven't even barely touched Chapter Two yet with our, with our work sessions, so. Nothing, nothing has changed in the 2021 code.
Is there, I mean, an evolving redline version?
Not, not out for public yet because we're still working.
We, yeah, we're still, yeah, the redlines keep coming back, we keep changing it. So we're not even, we're not even to a point to an official redline draft at this point, so. We have, we have, we've still got to go back to the, to the tables and work on the tables, and that's beginning of Chapter Two, so.
Right, yeah, that's the big one.
Well, you know, we're getting some input, right? And so that's kind of why we're here today, we're, it's only been a couple months. It's been a lot, just like for you guys, the last couple months. And so now we're ready to get to the minute, ready. One of the things that we want to offer up is, you know, we do have some input, we do have some expertise, we do have some history with some of our members. And so is there a way? Or would you want to even entertain something more upfront as far as working together?
What do you propose here?
Yeah, well, there's actually, we, so we have a lot of resources. We contacted La Plata to see how they, went through their process, and that's one we could follow. We could have regional meetings, we're kind of thinking of watersheds. Based on our codes around watersheds, like the 2016?
Remember that, 96, 97?
Oh, I'm sorry, 96, yeah. Stuff like that. And so we're kind of open, we're not kind of, we're pretty open, but we could certainly tailor something.
So, so just, just to step back a step, you know, we, in the, after 96, we had the area planning committees, okay? We still had one county-wide code. There weren't separate land use codes for, depending on what area of the county you were from.
Sure.
So, the area planning committees were just kind of a, a local committee that saw these applications. The challenge with that was, is if, if, if you wanted to bring some business that needed conditional approval, you had to go see the area planning committee, then you had to go see the planning commission, and then you had to go see the county. And the challenge was, is we were, I mean, we were losing business, we were losing development in this county because they could do so much easier and so much cheaper in Montrose County.
And quicker.
And quicker. So, you know, that was, that was the biggest reason we stepped away from that area planning committee process, was just to, just to try to help, you know, make it easier for the applicant. And this, this wasn't just, I mean, this wasn't just somebody, this is a business company, and that was, that was somebody that wanted to subdivide a few parcels of land. And it added a, added a whole nother level of, of time and cost to those people to do that. So that, that was, just, just for information on, on the watershed thing, that's, that's part of the reason that, that we went away from that when we, when we went to this point.
There was inconsistent application of the land use code. It became popularity contest.
So, it was hard to staff them too, right?
Hard to staff them. If somebody didn't like you, and you proposed a project, had an area planning commission, they could stand up and just raise holy heck with you, okay? And we've all seen it happen.
Sure.
So the inconsistent application of the codes, time, it just drug on and on. And again, staffing like Mr. McCain did.
So, what La Plata did was, they formed a group kind of like we did. And then they were allowed some formal process where they were able to take the code and then hold district meetings, or we would focus on watershed meetings, where we could present a modified code that the community would help work on in, in each district, get feedback, kind of moderate that chaos, and then present something back to you guys.
How's that different than the public input we're taking right now?
People don't really feel like they're being heard, and like some of our suggestions aren't really being noticed or implemented, taken seriously.
How do you know that?
I don't know that, it's just the feedback we're getting.
Okay, that's a perception.
Sure, and that-
Doesn't make it accurate.
Right, that's, that's the way people feel right now. There, there is a lot of, you know, disenfranchisement and upset around this whole process and how it's done. And so we're trying to funnel that in a way that's productive, that can, that can solve this issue for everyone. One thing that in La Plata they did was they were able to have the community help rewrite the code, or write a new code, and then they, their group went around to the districts and got feedback and presented it back to the commissioners.
But we saw that at the big public hearing, the level of acrimony and harsh words intimidated those who actually wanted to speak too.
Yeah, and that's just-
So why would that be any different than what you're proposing?
Well, we're identifying people that actually signed up to want to work on the codes.
But how would that, how would your public input differ from the meeting the commissioners had? So that people who wanted to speak weren't intimidated?
Well, they could email or call us directly, or, or show up to a district meeting.
They can do that, same with us, they're collective representatives.
Right, but it's just one, one option. Like right now, the people don't feel like they're going to, they're being, we're, we're trying to help offer a solution to that. And so we don't have the answers yet, we're just now getting working on it to, to figure out how we do have it.
Nico just said that you guys were responsible for getting all those people there the night of the big hearing.
We listened to everyone who wanted to talk, and they drove out people, others that wanted to speak that night too. So I don't see that as helpful, that, that actually hurt the process.
And how many people had signed up to speak who didn't speak though? I heard all the names that went down there, all the names-
We had people, one gentleman actually stood up and said, "This is very intimidating to have a contrary opinion." And they wouldn't speak.
Well, there were a few who did speak, were considered contrary opinion, and I just note that they didn't get applause as well, so.
Well, the, the key, I think the key here is, I mean, we're trying to avoid mob rule. You know, that's, that's, that's a basis of, one of the bases of our republic is trying to avoid that mob rule. And I definitely, I definitely want community input, I 100% want it. I, I think the challenge here is, you know, which, which group do we allow to lead the charge? You know, we've got about three different groups out there working on this, and, you know, which group do we allow to lead that charge? You know, I, I think, I think each one can, can serve as, as a special interest group, and then, and then bring their, their feedback back to the county. But I think, I think us as commissioners is going to have a real hard time sanctioning one single group with this charge of going out and getting community input. You follow what I'm saying? I, I 100% encourage you, get all the public input you can. I mean, every, I mean, I've told you guys, I mean, every one of these yellow tabs and more are emails that I've got from citizens, some from you guys yourselves, that I've, I've said, "Yeah, you're right. That needs, that's not right in this code, we need to fix that." And I'm doing the same thing in the, in the 2021 code. As we're, as we're finding these things, you know, I, I'm, I'm all for that. I just, I'm concerned about sanctioning a single group to do that.
Got you, and that's not what we're asking. Apologize. And so, as far as the APCs, we're not really specifically addressing that either. And I, maybe I misspoke.
Okay, yeah, I just, I just wanted to kind of, not everybody's aware of that, that history of how that evolved and where, where we got, how we got where we are.
Sure, sure. And so moving forward, as far as, we have, we have an organization, we can certainly get some public input. And we can certainly channel whatever it is you were addressing, Mr. Coons, as far as disruption in the process. Still, that, the point being is, these land use codes are pretty important, and the public input that you're referencing, it would be a public hearing again for these 2021 revisions or amendments, or whatever you're working on right now, right?
Yeah, we have to have a public hearing, or there's, that's required by statute, yes.
And so that's kind of what you're referencing, is that right?
Correct, we'll do it again, certainly will.
Yeah, and so that's, that's one hearing?
Depends on how it goes.
Ruin here.
The planning commission will have to have a hearing on it, will have to have at least one hearing on it, so, yeah. There's, there's-
So the planning commission doesn't have to have a-
Or they don't have to have a hearing on it, okay. Okay, I thought, yeah, okay.
Actually, I prefer the planning commission didn't have a hearing on it. Those are all volunteers. And people sit and have to sit in these three seats up here actually responsible for this.
Yeah.
So, I would prefer that we are, we have the hearing and take all the public input.
And as it says now, you guys are at least heading up the charts as far as, in terms of revisions.
I don't want to subject the volunteer members of a planning commission to that again.
So you might advise your members and all the people on your website and social chats that, right now, there's not going to be any public-
Planning commission.
At the, the planning commission when they need. And so you might tell your members and your followers that it's not the planning commission's responsibility to listen to the public unless it's on a specific issue that's on the agenda, I want their agenda, whether it's, you know, subdivision, an event center, whatever it is, it has to be on the agenda that they want to give their public input, that's fine, but it's got to be on that agenda. You can't just have people go up there and say, "Well, I don't want to talk about the event center, I don't want to talk about land use codes," and then start rambling on, because there's no order to it.
It's not fair to the applicant.
And like they say, our guys in the planning commission are volunteers. They don't want to be bullied, or felt oppressed, or overpowered, or afraid to go out in the parking lot. We had one member at that planning commission, the first one that got boisterous, that, I don't know how you call it, harassed one of our female employees in the hall. And we don't want that, and we're, I'm not going to stand for it. If the public demands that the planning commission have a public comment period, I'm not for it. Just because it gets too rowdy and they are not paid or elected to represent. There's people out there in the county that think the planning commission, "You represent my district, BS." They don't, they're just on that commission for that area, for that district, to put their input in, whatever's on the agenda. But as far as representing people, only the elected officials are representing people.
I'm wondering, do you guys have specifics that, that you've got the input for that we can make this conversation, you know, get down into some of the details? Because of the, the, some of the other groups have brought forward, here's where we'd like to see some changes. So, do you guys have some, are you, do you have that based on the input you've got that we could?
Well, let me, let me address something real quick here first. You know, and I don't like to hear that either.
Don't like to hear what?
About people getting riled up and certainly not harassing anybody, and that, we don't represent that.
Well, I appreciate you saying that.
And, and as far as, and whoever that was, I've never seen him, I was there, but I've never seen him since, either, before or since. And then as far as people getting out of line and wanting to talk about something different and whatnot, again, you know, that's, we're here representing us as we said. Nothing untoward, certainly. And so, and we're not responsible for that, I just want to make sure that it's understood. And as far as, to 600 people, we were in part responsible for 600 people, not, not, certainly not all, I don't know how many of that, but it was due to our efforts for sure. And that, we will acknowledge. As far as specifics, address and purpose.
Well, one immediate specific that comes to mind, I heard the ADU is being considered the limited use permit versus allowed by right.
In our last work session, we've, we've revised that, it'll be, you know, we left the last work session. Once again, these are all draft changes, so none of this is set in stone. But as we left it in the last work session, that will be allowed by right.
Okay, perfect. Because I mean, one of the biggest issues is, is this affordable housing issue, and there's nothing more affordable than being able to build your own cabin behind your mom's house, on your mom's property.
And I don't know if you guys are aware of this, the state legislature is passing, working on passing a bill right now that's going to make, make it statewide, that any, any ADU or additional resident will be allowed by right in all codes.
And there's also another one where they're talking about getting first right of refusal to purchase any residential property in order to make it a government-owned affordable housing unit, which I don't like that.
No, that's, that's, that's a mess. We, the, we'll see where the, where the amendments go on that bill. But that, that's actually kind of a scary bill. That's, that's basically, the government could come in on every property sold and say, "We want right of first refusal, full contract signed," so.
And that's something I think, you know, we, the people, and you guys as commissioners, need to say no, I mean-
We are opposing.
We've, we've been, we've been fighting it, but the, the state legislature, they're, they're, they're pretty set. They don't, they are, they are exactly listening to the rural counties, so.
Our, Matt Soper is one of our guys, Will Catlin, is that who?
Mark Catlin.
Mark Catlin.
Mark Catlin. Do you guys know them?
Yeah. And they're, they're both opposed. In fact, all, all the state, Senator State Reps, we have, are opposed to that.
Oh, that's, that's great to hear. That's, that's one thing too, that, as, you know, as the rabble, as the people, we, we just want to know that we have you as allies in terms of, you know, our best interest as small farmers. I mean, I never wanted to crawl out of the woods and come in this room, but I have. And I just want to, that, want people to know that they can do that, that here, we're still free to live in the woods and mind your own business and do laps alone. And part of this whole process that has come out is it threatens that kind of lifestyle by saying no.
Okay, Nico, I've heard you say that a number of times. What specifically can you not do?
Well, the idea of, well, I mean, it's getting better, I mean, you revert, this is the worst part, I think, this table to be where it was in the update. By going back to where it is here, I think that's a great improvement in the right direction, so.
And so, so, I mean, like, you know, just, just so we're clear moving forward in the conversation, we've rejected this revision twice now, okay?
Right.
So, you know, it's the 2021 code we're working off of, and that's, that's kind of where we need to maintain our focus because, you know, there, there are some wording changes in that revision that did simplify, that we are going to implement, but as far as structural changes, I mean, we're literally, we're going through this page by page for a reason, so we can make sure that we're not being, you know, overly restrictive, that, that we are keeping this, I mean, right now, Delta County's code is one of the most lenient codes in the state of Colorado, and we'd really like to keep it that way, so.
I think one of the things that, that most of the people that we've talked to have identified is this has changed a, a natural property surface right that's protected by the Constitution to one that's of privilege. And right now, most people are having a hard time keeping up with this moving target to be able to offer substantial, specific advice on this. So, one thing that our group keeps coming back to is like, well, is there a way to simplify this code that only addresses the problems that we're trying to solve? What are the problems that this 200 pages is trying to solve? And is it creating more problems than it's, than it's addressing?
And, and, and to that point, I mean, this is, this is, this is the 2021 code. The bulk of this code addresses subdivisions and how, how properties are subdivided. So, you know, most of this, most of this does not have to do with what you do on that property. What we, what we stepped away from in the old code was a specific use process, where if you wanted to do something that was outside of, outside of ag, outside of residence, that you had to go and get a permit, you had to ask your neighbors for permission, basically, to do that to your property. So that's, you know, and we had, we had a lot of debate about this. That's why we went to a zoning plan that gave those uses by right.
Sure, but aren't we kind of losing a lot of depth and knowledge of our neighborhoods by kind of getting away from some of that neighborhood input? Just examples like easements and waterways and ditches that, that are there that somebody who had bought the property recently would not really know about unless they did talk to their neighbors.
I just heard from Nico saying he wants to live on his, live in the woods and not be bothered. So why would you ask that of Nico?
Well, because we're good neighbors.
Well, but, okay, but I'm going to, I'm going to take your point, because communication with your neighbors and asking your neighbors for permission is two different things.
Sure, yeah, no, totally. And so I, I think that what I keep hearing is that this code book is more panel, it's more like penalty-oriented. And we have an opportunity here to do something that's more solution-based, and that includes neighbors in this discussion. And I think something that I liked about the specific development application was when you change the neighborhood substantially, you would talk to your neighbors- you would talk to your neighbors and see, come to some sort of agreement. Talking to people that were on the PC or the area planning commissions, most of the time, the neighbors were able to, to come to some sort of agreement. And so I, I think that that is just one specific thing. And again, we can come back to you with, with other specific examples. We just kind of want to know that that's going to be heard or implemented even. So a lot of people are frustrated. We send emails, it doesn't seem like anything's happened and this thing's moving so fast that, you know, a lot of us don't have time to keep up with that. So one of the things that was said in the public hearing was like, stop, it can be stopped for a while so that we can have time to, to really implement the public's hearing, the public's comments and.
Okay, so I'll tell you about the stuff. We've got people who want to do something with their land splits, legacy lots, they want to split an acre off.
Yeah.
Okay, and do boundary lines adjustments and all that. And the engineering and surveying companies who represent them are saying, please get this done today.
Sure, but. Wouldn't it be easier then just to take this out and then redo that at a pace that?
This is a glacial pace. You heard Don, we're going at this page by page, line by line. We haven't even, what, we've been on six weeks? We haven't even finished chapter two.
Sure.
This is not, this is not a breakneck speed here. This is very deliberate. So I, I don't understand that.
Well, and, and the other part is, I mean, we don't have a, we don't have a prior code to fall back on. That code was repealed.
It wasn't actually repealed though. The 2016, 2011 specific development, it's, it's still in place.
Okay, well, our, our legal staff would disagree with you, so. That's, 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 that's what, that's, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll let the attorney decide that because that's, that's him that makes that determination, so. When you said, when you said you had nothing to fall back on, I don't understand that, what you're saying. Because, because the prior code's been repealed. So the 2021 code is, is, is our, our land use code. If we repeal this, we won't have a land use code.
Well, if you repeal the resolution that put that in place, right? Wouldn't that put back what was supposed to be repealed? Because weren't, weren't those ordinances? I guess that's, I guess that's where the, a lot of people that we've talked to think that ordinance can't be repealed by a resolution. So they, they're assuming that if you guys wanted to repeal that resolution, that it would fall back to the ordinances that.
So if, for an ordinance to be changed, it goes through two public notices.
Right, yeah.
Right, so the specific development ordinance is still in place. That would, that's another one of the, that's another one of the quagmires of Delta.
Right, so that's kind of what most people think right now. And so, you know, honestly, like, we have a, we have a chance here to, to be champions for the people and to restore some faith and trust in government. And offering some sort of olive branch to the public right now would go on way.
Carl, do you have something that?
Well, just operationally, the, the resolution that adopted the 2021 land use code repealed resolutions for specific development and subdivision. The ordinance is development application, so I want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. Specific development wasn't an ordinance, it was a resolution. And that was repealed when the 2021 code was adopted. The ordinances were not, just one was by resolution.
Right.
Right, so there's a lot of different.
Okay, so, so back to the kind of the question, I, I, you've heard me probably say it in several meetings now. You know, what is it in the 2021 code that's, that's not allowing people to have their property rights the way they see fit?
It changes the fundamental nature of, of our rights in this county. Absolutely changes the constitutional basis of our rights to surface use of our property into one of privilege.
Well, I, I'm, I'm, I'm going to kind of play in semantics here with you. With our specific development process, you technically didn't have those rights either the way you're, the way you're stating them. Because you still had to go ask some governmental body for permission to develop your property beyond ag, residential or, or some basic issues. In fact, we, we, we've actually increased the amount allowed by right in this code from what was allowed by specific development before. So, so I'm kind of, I'm going to, I'm going to kind of call King's X here a little bit because I, I, I don't think that that's, that's fully accurate.
Sure, and, and it's a perception, I'm sure, but that's what everything is. And I think a lot of people did agree with the concepts that were in place before. If you're going to substantially change the neighborhood and the nature of your neighborhood and the use of the roadways, then we should have some discussion with everyone else because you're affecting them now.
You still have that.
Yeah, it's still, it's still in the code.
Yeah, we put signs that are relevant to that property up there, you know, the public hearing on this date to let the neighbors know.
I think part of the, the issue is we'd like to start at the ground again and move up. Because I understand.
We can't do that. We can't do that.
And why can't we do that though?
Because we have gone, we have worked on this code and worked on this code. If you throw it all away.
I'm not saying throw it all away.
Where are you going to start at?
I'm saying, I'm saying, start, sorry, that, that particular part of like putting up signs and whatnot, of starting in the neighborhood with the discussion and then coming here and then getting signed, working out the problems there. Because that's historically from folk we've been talking to who participated in that, that's where it went. Was we work out the problems in the neighborhood level and then come to the county and say, here's our project proposal. We've already got there, we've already come to an agreement here. And as far as taking too much time, one thing, I consider if something's going to be around for a decade, you know, some project's going to be there for, you know, multiple decades. I think it's okay to spend another month for the neighborhood to get comfortable with the idea of that being there.
So in the proposed 2022, and again, I know we're not, the neighborhood meetings are in there. And that is the language that, that three of these commissioners are considering putting in what will go forward. So that is a change from 21 to 22, is that neighborhood meeting back in. So they've heard everybody and that is in there. Planning Commission said that as well as what these individuals are saying, so it is in there.
Okay, now, but is that before the application or is that after an application that?
It's during the application, yeah.
The application's split and then it's part of the process.
Right, so that's in there.
Okay.
That's in the proposed, yeah.
So.
And that was in the 2022 proposals.
Okay, yeah, I recall, I recall reading that, but.
Right.
If that's at the front end of everything is all I'm saying. Because problems can get worked out at the beginning before, before we come down and to the county. That's, it just makes sense to me.
Right, and the planning commissioner are the ones that said to do that because the, the planning commission meetings were turning into neighborhood meetings. So the planning commissioners were the ones that said, yes, put it back in. So that's, they've heard everybody there.
And that is where, in this new revision or whatnot?
Again, try not to get, it is proposed, it was proposed in the 2022 amendments. And then it's been agreed upon that it needs to be back in the 2021 as we move forward with the 2023 amendments.
And that's, this is one of the things that makes it hard for people in the community to work on this thing is because it's constantly changing. It's like we're chasing a moving target. We might address something that you've changed and now we come to you with an issue and you've already changed it. And so it's.
And I can understand, I can understand that frustration because, you know, it, it's tough to, it's tough to see what's going on when you can't see that red line version. The other challenge we're have is, you know, we're on our third set of changes on the, on the red line version that we talked about three meetings ago.
Right.
Okay, so, so we are, we are changing this thing constantly too. So, you know, we don't even, we don't even have a draft document that we're ready to put out in the public because we keep, we keep changing it. And like Commissioner Coontz said, we, we're barely into the second chap, we're not even halfway through the second chapter yet. We're, we're six, six meetings into this thing, bro.
And I think incorporating some of what the community's talking about might help you guys a little bit. Most people kind of like getting down to specific zoning stuff. This table is Euclidean based zoning, says that you can only do this based on the map that you draw. Another option of zoning is performance based, which is more of a neighborhood. But you change the, the nature of your neighborhood. So there's two different kinds of, of zoning. And if, if these, I think this table is what a lot of people are having problems with. Because it's defining specifically what you can or can't do in your zone. And that could be alleviated, might make it easier for you guys if we would switch to a performance based zoning concept. And that's kind of what was in the master plan.
Well, I can't, I think what, if we can, I mean, we're, we're getting close to having that, that table straightened out, that Table 2B, which is obviously, it's, it's one of the most concerning parts of this whole code. You know, we are getting close to having, I think we're getting close to having a, a draft version of that ready to go. You know, we've probably one more meeting and we'll, we'll have hashed this thing through to the point that we'll be ready to send it out as a, you know, a, a red line version of the tape. And I think, you know, once, once everybody sees the changes that we've made to it, I, I think, I think people's, people's concepts of that are going to change, I really do.
But this could change at any moment, like if, if we, right now, everybody's upset we're paying attention. But in two years, when we're not paying attention anymore, that table could be changed.
The, the demographics of this county are changing constantly. You could have three Democrats up here that will have building codes in two years.
Right, and this, this whole process has opened the door to the tiptoe of restrictions and regulations that nobody, that we've talked to is even okay with. And so one of the main problems is the way that this was put in place. Nobody even knew about it.
Well, I kind of disagree. You know, we had the public meetings and two here, two Cedar Ridge, two Hoxton. And people that were interested, the people that were.
Paying attention at the time.
At the time, you know, what more could we have done other than put a mailer in the mailbox? And why should the taxpayers have to pay for that when it's in the public notice without sign?
Sixty-five thousand, sixty-five hundred dollars to mail everybody.
Sure, that was money well spent because that was a time where we were fearing for our lives and our livelihoods. And that's a big problem that people have right now is the fundamental nature of our land use rights in the county were changed while most of us were in fear. And so.
So, so, okay, let's, let's, just, just so I know where we're, are we talking about the 2021 code?
Yeah.
Are we talking about the 2022 revision?
The 20, well, it still kind of all happened during the pandemic, I suppose. But no, nobody really knew a lot. I, I did, but I wasn't paying that much attention to the code. So all we were directed to look at was the CAFO stuff by a couple of groups from PANDA. So again, I, I don't want to get off topic, but it's, this, this is a big deal. And obviously, a lot of people are upset and, and we're trying to buffer that and funnel in a way that's productive. But we don't feel like we have any meaningful or formal way to change this.
So, I mean, just, Commissioner Coontz is going to have to go pretty quick. So let's, let's, let's just, let's just talk logistics here, okay? We're, you know, we're trying, we're trying to muster through this thing. It, it's going to take time. We've been, we've been going at it hard and we still got a ways to go, okay? So what, what I think we need to do is, is we get through this process as commissioners, we come up with a draft, okay? At that time, this draft is going to go out to everybody. It's going to go out to publics, it's going to go out to planning commission, it'll go out to the groups. And then everybody will have a chance to go through this thing, just, just like they did the last one. Like I said, I've, I've got, I got emails from, just, I don't think I got any emails from you, David. I got emails from just about everybody with specifics in that code. And, and we addressed those and, and we'll continue to address those because that's, you know, we, we had the, we had the big meeting over there, we had six hundred people show up, we had over a hundred people speak. But you guys were there, there were, you know, it, it was mostly platitude. There, there were very few specifics. And, and, and we need, we need those meetings with the specifics so we can know what needs to be fixed. And I've told everybody that emails me, I tell them, give me the specifics, I will do everything I can. If it's a legitimate issue, I will do everything I can to remedy that. So, and, and that's where, you know, I, I, I keep falling back on this 21 code. I, I know, you know, the, the narrative is out there that came out in the, in the cover of COVID. But we started this two years before COVID started. And, you know, hundreds of hours of meetings, community meetings, work groups, work sessions.
All the public meetings were during COVID.
No, sir.
No, sir.
No, sir, absolutely not.
I went to.
Absolutely not.
June twenty twenty-two.
We started these meetings in 2019.
The third draft was out in June twenty twenty. And the first public meeting from what I noticed was in June of twenty twenty.
No, the first, first meeting started in the first quarter of twenty nineteen.
Thirty-four days, but.
And is on the radio.
Well, there may be, and, and we don't want to get caught up, that is not the intention here to get caught up in that. We have still come across, the, the fact of the matter is, we still come across people that have no clue. No clue, right? So certainly, certainly there's room for both instances in this evolution. With that said, we are doing our, our MOs now to make the public aware, at least the public aware. And as far as, two things. There's something you said that is driving this as far as pending.
Application.
Applications?
Yeah, people want.
As opposed to actual.
People wants certainty in what they can do with their land, just like all of us in here. They want to be able to know that they can split an acre off for a kid on a forty acre parcel. Whatever it is they're going to do.
And so there's a, a pile of.
They're all waiting. That's what we've been told, the, the survey community that represents them.
I see.
Says, can you please get this done? Make boundary line adjustments easy.
In a nutshell, surveyors at least, for the bulk of it anyway, that is.
Goosewood Energy would much rather have a renewable energy section in the code than do what they have.
Sure, sure. Okay, so, so you guys are under some duress for lack of.
No, but we see this letting this thing drag on forever is not helping anybody.
That's understood.
And, and, and I'm, I'm going to encourage you guys, I mean, go through the 2021 code. And as you find it, email it, let us know so we can, we want to put that.
So if you reference these page numbers in this one, is that sufficient?
So here, here's what I'm going to suggest because every time these things get redlined, the page numbers change.
So your copy isn't the same as mine?
Right, so, so if you can reference chapter and.
Section.
Section, that is, that is by far the best way. If, if we can have chapter, section, paragraph, that, that is what works the best. Because I've got, like I said, I've got, I've got three, four codes now sitting there and every one of them, I can't go by the page.
Right.
Did you hear, let me when I mentioned.
What's that?
Chapter and section. Is that something?
Right, right, the resolution, we've gone through the first revision, second revision.
To this 2021 version.
Twenty twenty-one, the revision.
The way the editing was done, I don't know.
And know that I think three different times, I guess, just for home.
If you can, then great.
To concatenate the public comments that do that, chapter verse, so that we make sure they get incorporated. So we do understand what's being asked.
So what's your process for that? If, if one person says they don't like this, do you change it automatically?
We, we evaluate it.
So if ten people say that they want some change.
We've got emails saying people that want building codes. Obviously, we haven't implemented that. So I mean, we're, we're getting it from, we're getting it from everybody.
We got realtors saying beef up the enforcement because makes property values go up in the air.
Yeah, because some people think their code solves problems. We can't help, they don't really always solve problems.
Another extension of that question. When, so I sent a, a, a email on chapter thirteen specifically to YouTube. And then I didn't hear anything back and I emailed again and I heard from Commissioner Supas right away. Coontz, it looks like you sent it to Carl.
I did.
And then said, hey, did you get this? Then back, is that, which, that process, when you say you all review it, who? And, and, yeah, who? Walk me through that chain.
I can tell you what I do, because we get so many. I get an email from Noel, I look at it saying, okay, that's this chapter here. I make a note and I forward it on to Carl to make sure it gets included in the public comments section so that he captures it also when we go to talk about that particular one.
Okay, but it, so is it just, just you? Okay, but it, so is it just, just you and three commissioners kind of going over that stuff? Or do you all congregate, you know?
We, we get our work sessions. We, we don't get, we don't get to meet outside of this room.
Sure.
To discuss this.
Sure.
We get our work sessions, open meeting hours, don't let us go have these conversations. So, I mean, literally, that's, once again, all, all the yellow sticky notes. That, that's my way of keeping track. If somebody e- emails me, I say, no, you're right, this needs to be done. The emails that I don't get, don't agree with, you know, I, I, they don't get, they don't get implemented.
But, but as far, it, it's basically you three.
Correct.
That, not necessarily anybody else at all.
We ask Mr. Holm and his staff legal.
Well, but, you know.
Okay, from time to time, representative planning commissioner others.
We, we use, we use Carl and staff to, to consolidate these so they can keep it all in track in the, in the revision we're working on, but.
That's more of an administrative function as opposed to a counseling function of these. All right, cool. So, so that's, I think that's a big question right now. Is, okay, were these emails, comments, what have you, go over to directly? And then what's the process for that? And so essentially, it's you guys, at least right now.
Yeah, we're, you know, we, we've taken this on ourselves. We've, we've said, you know, that, that this is gonna come from us and the planning commission will get a chance to review. And then it'll be up to us to, to, to pass it or change it or, or kick it back to the curve, so.
So come May, or, or at least, you know, I, I think that's your.
I think you're being optimistic.
Wow, fantastic. Uh, let's see, whenever that comes around, you guys make the red line. Push it off the commission, the PC, PC has, I guess, what, thirty days, I think, something like that, gonna go through it. They're gonna make any recommendations, whatnot. And so this, uh, uh, let's, let's just for the sake of argument, say everything's copacetic, gets good to you guys. And then that's when the hearing starts and potentially, potentially arguably, it could start all over again.
Correct.
Once you're doing that.
Correct.
Okay, so with the direct input, you're saying that's the best way?
Absolutely.
Direct, direct to you, to the horse's mouth here.
Absolutely, I mean, this, this is.
Someone I have to excuse myself.
All right, sure, appreciate it coming today.
You know, I've, I've got a, I've got a whole separate file on this computer for all the land use emails I've gotten. I went back through that file the other day and it's been on the stupid side right now, how many emails I've got.
I bet.
And, and once again, I, I, I appreciate, I've got a lot of emails. Some of you gentlemen, they're very specific, that, that list out stuff that makes sense. But then, you know, then I also get emails that are, you know, a little bit out in left field and never gonna work. So that's, that's okay. We're, we're, I'd still, I still want to hear from everybody as to what's going on. If I, if I start getting a bunch of emails that, that disagree with, with the way I think it should be representing the people that I'm trying to represent. Then, then I need to, maybe need to rethink my line of thoughts, so.
Sure. Okay.
But I, I just want everybody to understand there's a lot of input and it's the full bell curve of input.
Oh, sure. Oh, I can only imagine.
So we're really gonna only have like thirty days to review, once you guys get a red line done. And did it, like you're gonna submit to the PC, we're really only have thirty days plus however, however long you guys take once you get it back. So that's only like, I mean, if you did it by the statute, it's only thirty plus fourteen days. If you were to send the notice out right away for a public hearing, that's only forty four days for the community to review the code. To see if our comments were integrated and then to offer substantive changes that you wouldn't be able to make at that time, right? Because the PC would.
Technically, technically right, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to make substantive changes at that. We would have to, we would have to then go back and then, then redo it right.
Yeah, so that's, I think that's the nagging issue that, that we're dealing with. It's like we're chasing right now a moving target. Um, and we're, there's no meaningful way where the, the, the community's gonna have time for input. Or to digest this and then input. Um, we're gonna be really chasing these deadlines. And to do this right, and what La Plata did, referring to how they include their community. It took them about a year to draft a new codebook or to go through line by line and draft one that the community was happy with. And then they held district meetings to let the, let the, each community read it and then offer.
And that was done on, on their side, not from the.
Right, so they handled all that chaos and the upset people in the meetings. And then they brought back a codebook that everybody generally agreed was, was okay. And they brought it back to the commission at that time. And that took about a year, I think even said maybe two years. So that's kind of what most people were saying when they were like, stop, we, we need time to do this. And now that planting season's here, we're not gonna really have a lot of time to sit there and read line by line through codes. So that's kind of what we're hoping to at least present and maybe get your wheels turning on. If there's a way to provide some time after you guys get the red line to include the community. Not just sending emails to you, because we did that in the past one and it didn't seem like those were integrated in the, into the.
They got rejected. It got rejected twice, so obviously it worked.
Well, yeah, it worked because everybody was upset and we appreciate that, um, but.
We, we rejected it before anybody was even aware of it, so.
So we, we just want time to make sure that what we're, the community is saying is being implemented. Because this is, piece of legislation is gonna last for a long time. And like I said, there's a, we could go to a more performance based zoning and just toss out this whole table. And, and that's what most people have a problem, is the specifics of what you want to do.
And, and once again, I, I want to know what those specifics are. Have, have people tell them to email me, say, I cannot operate my business or I can operate my property in this county. Because table two A, this section, this section here, I can't do it. I want to hear that.
So, so how about this, um, I know that you guys have a lot of things that you need to, a lot of problems you need to solve. And, uh, the community has a lot of problems that they'd like to address. Is it possible to cleave this kind of codebook into, um, one that would be small farm ag based? More like our, our master plan was for, for ag. And then one would be for commercial industrial subdivisions. And we could have a residential handbook and the, the rest, the rest of the land use code. And you just get, delete everything that has to do with the small individual and the, the small acreage and the farmer out of this whole code. And simplify it for you guys.
So, I mean, so tech, technically, I mean, it, it states right in there in chapter two. I mean, everything ag is allowed by right in this county. It doesn't matter acreage or anything. If it's ag, it's allowed by right. So technically, that's already there. What, what the issues are is those that are outside of ag. You know, and those are the ones that, that we're spending the time discussing. But if, if, if it's ag, it's already in there allowed by right and that hasn't changed.
Well, I'm ag in my place and, uh, a small business or like, uh, you know, rentals or a cottage or building a shed or adding onto a house that exists, those are not allowed by right. Those are limited or conditional.
If you look at what we've adopted, what we're pushing, and that's, you know, once we get that finalized, we can release that table two B for input. And I think, I think that will be, that will be telling right there. Once, once everybody sees what we've done with table two B, I think there will be a change of attitude. But, you know, but I'm, I'm gonna put the onus back on the citizenry. I, I'm not gonna, you know, not, no more of the platitudes, oh, we hate it, throw it out, stop repeal. No, specifically what is in this that's keeping you from enjoying your private property rights? And that, that's gonna be the question that's asked because you, you'll find that most of these are, are allowed by right with, with the table we've been working on. Most of these issues are, are allowed by right.
I see. And, uh, uh, I have a question on the agricultural designation. Is that the official, like I officially taxed ag right on my property with the county? Or is that just any, any kind of agricultural?
So, so outside of large animal feeding operations, which we address as, as, as the CAFOs, it's covered. You know, what, I, I don't know, I don't know what you specifically do for ag on your property. But, you know, it's, the CAFOs are the only things that, that were specifically restricted in ag.
So that, you, you're taxed designation isn't an issue for ag?
No, it's, it's, it's purely, purely, purely zone and the ag is allowed throughout all the zones.
Does that include all activities related to agriculture? I mean, it says here agriculture, agribusiness. I mean, that, that includes everything related to the agricultural activity.
I, like, like I said, out, outside of CAFOs, which we do have the restrictions on.
Right, which.
Which I don't think anybody disagrees with those. I, you know, I, I, I guess, I mean, good, I, you know, how, how far, how far are you gonna push connected to ag? You know, is it, is it arguable?
Well, that's, I guess that's a question.
You know, I, I mean, you know, somebody.
Is there some kind of specific designation, rag, that you're asking there? I guess.
You know, I'm, I'm, I'm a set of a, a bar and lounge to, to, to feed my, to get my staff someplace to drink when they're done farming all day. Is that ag related?
Did you grow the barn?
Somebody could argue that it was, but I don't know it was, so.
Well, and Nico, at the beginning, you said live responsibly on their land. And you'll get a lot of different opinions about what is responsible. You know, we talk to people and they're filled with fear of what's going on and everything. We have family out in Beach Valley that think apparently that they're living responsibly with ninety mobile homes that have been deteriorating for decades. Throwing trash to the neighbors and the sewage not being taken care of. And they may have a different opinion about living responsibly than you. And that's why we've got land use codes.
I guess I get a question about that. Don't you guys already have a junk ordinance in place?
Junk and rubbish has been on the books for a long time. It just has not been enforced.
So how, why wouldn't that example be able to be solved by the junk coordinator?
That could, you could go out there and say a thousand bucks a day or whatever the fine is, they're not gonna pay it. I mean, what, it's gonna cost a million dollars somewhere to clean that property up. And the taxpayers, you guys, your family, your followers, should they pay for that? I don't think so.
Right.
It's a EPA made that situation. It was gonna be a rehab oper- operation and just went downhill. And you guys shouldn't have to pay for that. We're working with governments, trying to find grants to clean it up. But those are instances that nobody wants that next to them, so we're gonna have.
That's a prime example of, uh, a code really not solving a problem. And if, if you guys did want to solve it with the code, it would cost us money anyways, right?
Well.
So some of these things could be solved in a solution oriented manner. And that's kind of what we hear from people we're talking to is there are ways to solve those kind of problems without involving the government. Like a church rallying to help clean property up, get a community organizing a day to help do stuff. Uh, that would be volunteer based instead of mandated, you know?
And, and, and that's the approach we're taking. We, we, we've talked to Everett and we've said, you know, we, we don't want people getting tickets. We want people getting help if they can. And, and Everett's been working on that. He's, he's, we got expenditures every month where he's giving vouchers to the landfill to help people clean up their properties.
And buying trash bags and no fines have been levied on anybody. They tried to be a solution before it gets to that.
I've been in a lot of places, um, and I, my background was renewable energy. I had a solar and wind business in Des Moines for five years. And I spent countless hours going through land use codes to try to figure out how to put solar on people's houses. And I saw the simple codebooks, which is this could be considered simple, two hundred pages. And I saw what happens after twenty years when you start with this. And you get six hundred pages of stuff that's not well defined, it's all over the place. And it can be used however somebody interprets it. And that's, that's what most people are, are concerned with, is that this will eventually turn into that, which it, it seems to. It seems like when there's a problem, the administration wants to solve it with another code and another code to another code. I mean, along that same line, I mean, one thing that we really like to see is this, the end of this process to be something that's so solid. That it can last for years without major revisions. So, um, this part, like, it does feel like it's moving fast. I understand, yeah, page by page is glacial. But to get to a place where like we can have a, a, you know, an excellent, um, code that can accommodate and last for a long time. I think that'd be a really good objective in this.
And James, you brought up a good thing, solar panels. Thirty years ago, were solar panels that, uh, prevalent, you know? They, the new technology came out, better way to do it and everything. So then you've got to write specifics for solar, uh, cell towers. You know, fifty years ago, we'd have thought cell towers now, that people are so scared of having a cell tower next to them. But should the community, the neighbors have the right to tell that person that owns that land that's gonna get a monthly income from that cell tower? No, you can't have that income because I don't want that cell tower to you.
So I do apologize, we've got a four thirty that needs this room, so.
And we recognize this is a tough line to walk.
Well, and, and honestly, this is, th- these are the conversations that happen. You know, we, we've got to, I mean, I, I want community support for this, one hundred percent. And I, I think if we could keep people focused on specifics instead of platitudes, we get there. You know, because when you ask people for specifics, they're gonna be forced to educate themselves on it.
And not a lot of people can read through this and.
And, and we're, we're doing, and, and, and I, I gotta admit, I, I'm gonna apologize to that. I have done nothing but land use code here. My very first meeting when I was sworn in was the meeting that we, uh, signed the contract for the master plan. Okay, so I have done land use for over six years. And, and you're right, I, when I read this thing, I don't see the complications because I've read it so many fricking times that I dream about it in my sleep. Okay, so, but, so we're, we're trying to implement, but, you know, those wording changes, I mean, if you see something says, hey, you know, if, if you change the wording here, one hundred percent, we'll look at doing it, so.
Two things, I mean, one, I spent, I went through line by line the twenty twenty two update. I spent so much time in there that it's really hard to do that again. You know, I like, I don't get paid to read this, I don't have time to do it anymore. But, um, you know, I, I hear where you're coming from. I'm just saying, like, a lot of us are exhausted from this process.
So, so and that, and that's, and that's the, that's what, if, if, help, help us through this process. Go ahead, I mean, if you find these things, tell your people, hey, I, I'll, I'll give you more business cards. If, if you need business cards, let people know how to get ahold of me. Send me those emails, let me know what's going on.
So the way that I would approach, if I were to go back, because I've read both these things too and I'm kind of with him, it's a lot. I would just start deleting stuff. If it doesn't need to be in there, I would just delete it. And I, ideally, we had a land use code that was under a hundred pages. That, that was easy to understand and only really addressed the problems we're trying to solve. And, and that's, that's the way that I would approach this. And I don't know if I send you that document that I would spend weeks on, um, if that would even be considered. Because it's, it's, it's not in line with the way you guys are operating, right? So that, to me, that's how I would get something that would stand the test of time and be easy and I understand. And not easily misinterpreted. And I don't know if you guys would even be up for that.
You find a section, paragraph, chapter that you think needs to be deleted? Hundred percent, let me know. I'm, I'm, I'm all for making this thing simple. I have no problem with that at all. I, I, I can tell you, hundreds of hours of work sessions, Mike was there.
Can it make everybody's life easier?
Yeah.
It would. It'd make your guys' lives easier, make the planning commission's lives easier. Because that, I mean, from watching the planning commission operate, they're used to operating oppressive, is what it seems. They, they do things the way that it's been working in the past. And they even refer to that, oh, we did it this way and that worked. Um, this is a totally change of, it's a change on how they do business. And, um, they've, their, their knowledge, their depth of knowledge isn't really incorporated in here. And how they've dealt with things in the county. This is a boilerplate from international standards. And it's, it's, obviously, it's not working for a county. You guys have been spending, everybody's been spending so much time dealing with this thing.
I'm gonna disagree with you a little bit, you know? The, the challenges we had with it were the, were the six things that we went after, okay? The, you know, primarily was the lot size, the lot size variance that we were trying to control. That was, that was number one on the list. We had to fix that. And that was, that was what we wanted first and foremost. So that was, that was number one and everything else after that was, was secondary, tertiary. But, you know, and that, that was the biggest, that was the biggest challenge of this whole thing. Surveyors, obviously, they had some. Surveyors, obviously, they had some language changes they wanted, just because, you know, the the statutes, the way they read them, were a little different than than the way it was developed, but it it's, it's not necessarily gonna change the way business is done, it just changes the way two processes are done. But we we need to clear out of this room.
Sure.
Uh, you know, you got, you guys got, you guys got my email, you got my phone number, call me. Continue to work this out.
So uh we can call, anybody can call, any of you directly?
Absolutely.
And is that uh, what was much later than email?
Um, depends, I I, you know, if if somebody's giving me specifics over the phone, sometimes it's hard when I'm driving down the road to jot them down, and I'll ask them to email me, 'cause it's easier, and that way I keep a file on the computer. But I mean, if you've got specifics, call me, I've.
There.
Since this process started, hundreds of hours on the phone talking constituents.
And and the reason, there's a surprising amount of non-computer.
No, absolutely.
Users or literacy, you know, a surprising amount, you know?
No, absolutely, yeah, hopefully, like I said, I, here, here's a couple of cards.
Hey, okay, great.
I appreciate it. Somebody out there that needs to get ahold of me? There you go, no problem.
I have a specific question for you, sir.
Please, please.
Rural medium industry hand process, hand processing slaughterhouse, meat processing sawmill. I know there's two, two people who have sawmills, they're both, they're portable sawmills, but they're, they have, they're, they use their own yard for it. They just talk to their neighbors, their neighbors love it, why is it a limited use for that? Or are you, are you, in that limited use, are you speaking of like, more like redemption mill?
We're talking the large, the large scale, we're not talking, we're not talking the more, the personal use sawmills, or not?
Well, this is kinda, it's, it's, it's like a step up from personal, you know, it supplies builders, and um it supplies other people, uh but.
Are you done?
He can also move his mill, he can take a mill anywhere. And so a guy who got a slaughterhouse in the same way, an abatara, they can take other places, I mean, are these, are these things that can be still be allowed in terms of agribusiness?
So so, absolutely, I mean, it's, these, and these are some of the definitions that we need to work on. We're working, we're we're working, right now, we're we're hammering out the special events definitions, you know, because, you know, the the twenty-two revision came out very restrictive on special events, and that was part of the reason it got rejected, so.
You don't know with some feedback, you know, you have three events a year, uh is off. Well, you can have three events a year, if one event, it, well, all three events are seven days long, like the uh Cheyenne Frontier Days. That's one event, but it's seven days off. Do, does the roadway, does the neighbors want an event that happens three times a year, seven days each time? Would have road handle it, does it have the facilities? And that's addressed in there also, and that's something that some people came back, well, I can only have three events. Well, you can, but there's seven-day-long events that it's referring to.
I appreciate you guys' time.
Yeah, well, you know, it's, like I said, it's not, it's not, it's not a quick process, I can assure you, and and we're, we're, we're taking this feedback, and you know, and and I'll, I'll, I'll look at, I'll look at that, you know, that sawmill question, and you know, perhaps that's a, that's a definition issue, and we need to define that. As to what's allowed and what's what's limited.
And how do you define a sawmill, trucks coming in, horsepower, the sawmill motor, you define that?
The two gentlemen I know, they have a, like I said, it's a trailer bowl mill, it's a substantial mill, and they can, they can cut, you know, twenty foot long trees, and uh beans and things. But like, one, one gentleman, he's, he has an agreement with his neighbors, his neighbors love that he's got a mill, and his neighbor's gonna have some friends over for lunch on the patio, he just comes and says, hey, hey, can you just not do anything for an hour? So, you know, and there's like three neighbors right there, and nobody else, it's BLM right there, so it's like, things like that, like, do they really need to have a limited, any kinda limitation on the ability to make a living? I think these are the, these are the fundamental kinda questions.
So you won't blame if the guy put the cell tower on since he gets a monthly income from it?
Kinda has electromagnetic radiation that goes all over the place.
Humps your body.
It does, it does, and I mean, seriously, if I do something that we really need to, and this, this is something to be considered, like, there's no, there's no um, you know, published health studies on five G that we really should consider.
I see you're advertising ten G now.
They skip six, seven, eight, nine.
See how fast this moves?
I saw it a couple times, ten G.
Sorry, I missed the meeting, I was selected for a jury in this.
Oh, lucky you.
Thank you.
I know Jay was elected for a jury, because they always go out of medical order, by the time they get to S, they fill the jury, so.
Drive careful, everybody.